Call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-06 for March 18th, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Father.
Father.
Who art in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come.
Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
In giving us day and our daily bread.
And forgiving us all our trespasses.
As we forgive those who trust us against us.
And lead us not into temptation.
But deliver us from evil.
Thy name is the kingdom.
The power.
And glory forever.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda is passed unanimously. This time we have a proclamation to recognize Professional Social Work Month. Jill North, I believe, is here from Life Crisis, possibly.
They may be running late, Mr. President, because I'm not seeing them in the audience.
All right, I think we can move on and then we'll come back, right? Good morning, Ms. Hurley, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one housekeeping matter before we get started this morning, which pertains to legislative bill 2025-01. Pursuant to Charter Section 411, the amended version of legislative bill 2025-01 concerning commercial dog kennels was presented to the county executive on February the 19th, 2025. Under the charter, the county executive had 21 days to either approve or veto the amended bill. On March the 3rd, the county council received a letter from the county executive stating that she would not sign the amended bill due to a difference in interpretation regarding the procedural reconsideration of the bill. In accordance with Charter Section 411, the county executive, if the county executive fails to return the bill within the prescribed 21-day period, the council administrator must document this failure in the official record, and then the bill shall become law. This serves as official notice to the council and to the public that the 21-day period has passed and the county executive has neither signed nor vetoed the amended bill, and as required, this will be recorded in the official minutes.
Jill?
Okay, so next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 36-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 25 capital budget to authorize the county executive to accept a Federal Emergency Management Agency pre-disaster mitigation grant award in the amount of $29,482.50 for the Wycomico County Cove Road Acquisition Project. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and in the local newspaper. This request is to amend the capital budget for the Cove Road Beach Project. In 2020, the county was awarded a FEMA grant totaling $188,819.10 for the acquisition of the property adjacent to Cove Road Beach and for the demolition and cleanup of existing structures on the site. However, demolition and cleanup costs exceeded the initial cost estimates, prompting a request for the additional FEMA funding in the amount of $29,482.50. And Mr. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism, is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 36-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Okay, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 36-2025. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 36-2025.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Miller, I know you're here. I'd like to know how Wycomico County managed to get a FEMA grant and nobody else could.
Yeah.
All those in favor of Resolution Number 36-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 36-2025 passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 37-2025. This is approving amendments to the county's investment policy. Council had a work session on this request on February the 18th, and we have our Director of Finance Pam Olin here and our Deputy Director of Finance Charles Meckel, if you have any questions.
Any motion from council to approve Resolution 37-2025?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank the Finance Director and Charles as well for bringing this to our attention, recognizing the circumstances, and helping to improve us with our finances in Wycomico County. It's a really, this is a really good resolution here to get done and passed. Any other discussion from anyone? All those in favor of Resolution 37-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next item for business is Resolution Number 38-2025. This is confirming the appointment of Mr. Mustafa Kilcarson, PE, as Director of Public Works, and we have Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 38-2025. To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Good morning, Mr. Luf.
Good morning. So we submitted him last week, you know, if you have any, or last meeting, if you have any questions.
Anybody at all? All those in favor of Resolution 38-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, Resolution 38-2025 passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 39-2025, amending the fiscal year 25 position control document Exhibit E to increase the salary position number 100521, Public Works Director.
Any motion from council to approve Resolution 39-2025?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion?
Mr. Cannon, I noticed that we're moving this pay rate to the top, or this pay to the top of the pay rate for a new employee. Basically, we really don't know that much about, other than we did interview him, okay? We have no references on him whatsoever. The council has had no references. We're getting ready to go through the budget, and every year, there's always a pay, a pay raise in the budget every year. If we move this to the top, when the budget comes out, this employee will be able to get a pay raise. I would suggest we move this, I would like to amend this, to move this back to 5% below the $168,000 to $159,000, roundabout number there, at least for the probation period, or until and if there's pay raises given.
Make that amendment. There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
The motion is second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Bunky, why don't you?
I can't guarantee he'll accept it.
What?
I can't guarantee that he'll accept that amount. I don't know.
That's his choice.
Yeah. And if he doesn't, then, you know, we've been, I believe, four to five years without a Public Works Director. And that, there's also a cost in not having a Public Works Director or the PE for the service to county residents, as well as, you know, internally for our different departments.
If, if he doesn't accept it and we go with this, are we willing to remove the PE requirement? Or are we going to continue to do what we're doing?
Changes the job description.
Changes the job description a little bit, allows us to offer a little less money, and then we have a larger pool of people with a lot of experience. So if we do this, are we willing to take the PE off the job requirement?
I don't know that that's part of this discussion, really. That's a different.
It is, if he doesn't get accepted, then we're another six years without a Public Works Director.
Well, I don't know, you know, we're setting a precedent here of hiring people, we're moving them to the top of the pay rate, right out of the box. We have nowhere to go in the future unless we change that pay rate.
If we're not willing to take that PE away, I don't, I don't think I could go with it.
And we've also got, you know, everybody knows what we've been experiencing as far as budget woes with the state. We don't know what, you know, we need to be.
We need a functioning landfill with somebody at the top, and we've not known that person for six-plus years, and it's gonna be, what, seven next?
Well, we've also, we've also, we didn't discuss this in the previous agenda, but we've got somebody that has no experience in running a landfill or county roads or anything else, and that's why I think it's wise that we do something for probationary period pay rate, pay scale-wise, so.
I wish that was discussed during our closed session. That was not discussed during closed session, that this is just something that just happened.
Yeah, because then the candidate was here and we could have.
Candidate was here, everybody was at the table, finance was here, we had discussions.
We're not supposed to talk about closed sessions.
No, we're not talking about it, but all the important people were in their room to have this discussion, and this was not brought up.
Bunky?
Since we're so close to the budget, what if we were to move forward with this and exempt him from any pay increase?
Yeah.
Comes as a result of the budget.
So that was a conversation last meeting where I said, and, you know, I think, I don't remember exactly what agenda item it was, and this is where, you know, me and Pam disagree, because she said they need to be, well, I think, you know, the budget authority is yours. I think that that's, I think you can do that. I think, you know, and I think that'd be a good compromise.
We were told by the Finance Director we couldn't do it, right?
I don't think it, I think that hers is policy-wise, we shouldn't do it, but, I mean, she's in here, if, you know, she can make, make her case herself, but I think legally there's nothing restraining you from saying, we just hired this person X amount of days before the budget, we don't think it's appropriate to give them the raise. I don't, you know, I rely on legal if, you know.
That person might not feel that way.
I don't, but I understand your point, you know. Point well taken by me.
I believe we did adjust pace, we did adjust pay rates last year as the line item cut, so Pam, would you like to come, let us know your position on this?
I believe what I stated, and I could be off on this, is that we have not historically, this early before the budget, because we haven't even struck the budget, or, you know, given you a copy of it, excluded people from getting raises. Now, what Bunky is stating is totally true. Council has the authority to make changes once a budget is presented to them. Council could, if, if we presented a budget with a pay raise for this position because we give you a position control document, you could say, nope, this line we don't want to give a pay raise to if we put a pay raise in. What we have historically done is if we hire somebody in June, we have typically told them that they are not eligible for a raise in July, because it is within a month of being hired. The only time that is not, or, I can't say it's the only time, one of the few instances where that is not held true is associated with Sheriff's Department that is on a pay scale associated with a collective bargaining agreement that goes into effect in July. We hire on the scale that's in there in June, and then in July, they get whatever scale happens, those raises happen. But if we hire a position in finance, most of the time, we don't then give a raise in July. So if council, if we would present a budget that had this position getting a pay raise above what is being offered in the original amount, council would have the authority to say, no, we're not interested in that happening. So you would accomplish similar to the, similar to what Joe is asking for by giving the salary that this person has agreed to and said that they will come for, and then if we did put something in there, you would have the ability to make the reduction at that point in time.
Could we, you say the council can do that, why can't the executive do that in our budget?
Again, we haven't gotten to that section of the budget yet, so I can't, but we could.
Let me ask you a really stupid question, because I get confused with the position control document and all that. If the budget, if in the budget you were to allot the 5% increase, would we have to change the position, amend the position control document to change the range?
So.
Would the budget automatically do that?
So here's, here's the thing, is that last year, we did a four-plus-one. So what that meant was that the COLA, which the pay range then raised 4%, if we just, and then the 1% was basically a longevity, so people moved on the scale. If in this fiscal year, we offered a four-plus-one again, the scale would move up, the 168 would move up, the top end would move up, and you would move 1% on the scale for longevity. Now, if we decided that we felt the scale was appropriate and all we wanted to give was longevity, then the 168 would max out, and there wouldn't be anything additional to give. So it all, it's all in whether or not the scale moves. If we move the scale, there is still space for this position to move up. If we don't move the scale, there is no ability to give a raise to this position, because we do not go over the scale.
Perfect. So I know we're arguing about a small amount of funds, you know, as far as the budget goes and all that, but we're setting a precedent here of moving somebody to the top of the pay rate, you know, right out of the box. Like I said before, I voted, I voted to hire him, okay? I was reluctant to even do that due to, we had no references, he's not got any experience as, as far as running a landfill, county roads, from what I've seen, is probably not a lot of experience from managing people. I really think that we need to stay below this, at least for the probation period. That's, that's my amendment. I'm done.
There's a lot of discussion about the revenue cap and whether it's gonna get broke or if we should break it coming up in the budget. And, you know, I agree with Joe, we've got to get to a point where we start controlling the amount of money that we're spending. I'm not gonna be in favor of breaking the revenue cap. I hope it doesn't get broke, but if it doesn't get broke, I think we're gonna have some money worries in this next budget. So I agree with Joe, you know, we shouldn't be hiring people right at, right out of the gate at the highest pay level that we can.
It's unfortunate, this is, this just seems to be the market for engineers with PE's. I mean, it's, you know, I wish it wasn't.
I had a discussion with you earlier on this chair. I think the end game here is really to make sure we isolate it with the next budget, and that, I always thought it was really foolish to give somebody, you know, to hire somebody at a particular rate, and, you know, then a couple months later, give them an increase. I don't believe in that, and I believe, but I feel very comfortable with what Pam and Bunky are saying, that we have control over those measures. In retrospect, Joe, yeah, I would have liked to have had that conversation with them as far as the pay scale is concerned, but I do agree with the fact that it has taken us years to try to get someone in that position. I do not agree with, with eliminating the PE reference in the, in the job description. I believe that could create a liability if we didn't have that designation for that particular department head. So I, I understand, I agree with what you're suggesting, Joe, but I don't want.
Go for it, then.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't want to support the fact that I think that that probably should have been an issue that we should have considered a few, a couple weeks ago.
Wouldn't have mattered if it was a couple weeks ago.
I think it's a negotiation discussion.
Vote now. I mean, it wouldn't have mattered if we did that two weeks ago.
No, I think it was a negotiation issue that we should have had with the.
We don't, we don't get to negotiate, the county executive doesn't.
We can talk about anything we want, we can really talk about anything we want in that, in that meeting. I think, I don't agree with you there, I think we do have that in the closed session, that ability. But, yeah, I think as long as we, as long as we try to keep the lid on it on July 1st, I'm okay with letting it go here, because again, the position's been open for five years, six years.
Salary savings of six years.
Yeah.
Okay, if we move forward, what, what's the timeline?
He could begin the second week in April, so, and, you know, that was even with me saying, listen, I really want you to leave your company in a good place handing off everything, like, I don't want you to feel rushed, and he was like, absolutely, second week in April.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All the, all those in favor of the amendment which would reduce the, the pay amount by, what did you say, Joe, by five, to what? About 5%. Yes. All those in favor of reducing the, all those in favor of the amendment that would reduce the pay by 5% say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
And chair of the opposed, so the amendment fails 4 to 2, but thank you, Joe, I, I recognize it. Any other further? It's just money, right? Any other further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 39-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
OPPOSED. Motion's carried, resolution passes, I'm sorry, 4 to 2 on both votes, 4 to 2 on both votes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olin.
Next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 40-2025. This is to approve Kevin Karpinski Esquire in Karpinski Cornbrooks in Karp, PA, as Special Legal Counsel for Wycomico County on matters relating to the personnel manual revisions.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 40-2025.
To move.
Second.
To move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, Resolution 40-2025 passes unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Bunky, appreciate it.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertain a motion to adjourn for legislative session to convene as the local board of health.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. McConaughey, how are you?
Good morning, I'm fine, how about yourself?
Doing well, thank you. This is the proposed farmer's market permit that you're looking for?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So currently, we do not have a farmer's market or sampler's license application or permit with the Health Department. We currently operate with a temporary food service permit, which technically only allows for 30 consecutive days. So that would mean if an individual wanted to come and provide samples or provide foods that aren't necessarily approved at a farmer's market, they would have to reapply every 30 days, which is a $75 fee, whereas this permit will allow us to issue a one, once a year, $100 permit, and they would be able to come to the farmer's market and promote their wares, basically. Farmer's markets allow you to do cottage foods, whole produce, and non-hazardous foods. So this permit would, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was gonna ask, what is it, does it cost $100 to do the permit for you guys?
Uh, well, the amount of time for site review, plan review, it's probably more than 100.
All right, continue, sorry.
Yeah, so farmers markets, you can do raw produce, cottage foods, and non-hazardous food items. This would allow an individual to provide additional, it'd also allow farmers to be able to cut their produce, provide samples of produce, and things of that nature if they so intend.
Yeah, I've got some questions. So how many people do you have now buying the $75 permits?
Camden is our biggest farmer's market in the county, and that probably we, it, it depends on the season, but probably about 20, 30, I would say, probably end up getting a permit throughout the year.
That's 20 or 30 throughout the year or every?
Organization, so if they want to renew.
So that one farmer's market can't buy the permit for the whole farmer's market?
Correct.
Each individual has to buy that?
Yeah, it'd be for the vendor.
Yeah.
Because the vendor is the one who would hold the liability in case a food safety concern came up.
So how, how many times have you inspected this farmer's market?
We pretty much go out every month to evaluate, review, anytime there's a new vendor present, we go out, review the stand, just to make sure there's compliance.
Is that, is that correct? You sure about that? Because I've heard different, from, from the farmer's market.
We go out and we evaluate whenever there's a new vendor and that we're, been notified that there's a new vendor.
And you've been notified, how about if you haven't been notified? Do you go out just periodically, just to check?
We do do periodic checks, but if we're not notified, then how are we to know that there's a new unapproved vendor in the location?
Know that by walking through and seeing if there was one.
Correct, but it's the same as, you know, if somebody's down on 50 on the side of the road selling something, if somebody doesn't call us, how do we know not to go out and correct it? We're not continuously circuiting the county.
So let, let me ask this question, you know, I see you got like four pages of stuff here that needs to be filled out. Is this affecting anybody that's just selling vegetables alongside the road, a farmer?
No.
How about if they cut a tomato for you to sample? Does that affect them then?
Yes, that, you cannot do that.
You cannot do that?
Yeah.
So if, you know, Ma and Pa Kettle, we'll say, remember that show? No, you probably don't, you're too young, but anyway, if they, they've got a few pieces of produce out alongside the road, and somebody stops by to buy a tomato, and they want to see what their tomatoes look like, he can't take his pocket knife and open that tomato up?
Correct, that's against CO-MOR regulations. You can only do whole produce.
Yeah.
That, that is what's in regulations. I cannot say that upheld 100% of the time, but to operate a farmer's market or food produce stand, you're supposed to only offer whole produce.
So what is the purpose of this compared to what you have now, other than you say they have to buy a $75 license if they want to do it? What's, what's the purpose of changing this?
This, this permit puts us more in line with CO-MOR regulations as opposed to the temporary food, because it's a temporary food facility or a temporary food event license. This is, would be directly related to farmer's market and sampling.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any experience at the farmer's market?
Yeah, I did.
Would you like to comment on this?
You need.
You need to come up to the table.
You need to.
And identify yourself or to the podium. I'm more familiar with people selling along the road than in farmer's markets, so I don't have a lot of experience.
I'm Kenny Robinson, Mardella. I've been in downtown Salisbury Farmer's Market for over 40 years, and I haven't seen a Health Department person there yet. I've never bought one of these permits, didn't know there was such a thing, so, and I don't think the people in Camden have the permits, all of them, no way.
I could say it depends on how you operate or what you sell. If you're doing just raw produce, cottage foods, there's no need for you to have one of these permits.
So why do we need it?
You still don't. This is for people who would be selling processed produce, meaning cut, chopped, anything of that nature, for sampling. If you would be selling anything that is a hazardous food item, something that's prepared, cooked, brought to it, if you're just selling like a baked good, something that's canned, like jelly jam, things like that.
USDA qualifies anything that I wash as processed, correct?
Uh.
That's, that's true.
Oh, we're talking whole produce here.
Yeah, but if I wash a tomato, which I wash everything I bring out of field.
And that's fine, but the, the act of preparing it is the way that we evaluate it, if you're cutting, preparing it to be served.
USDA's, USDA's definition of processed is washed. So if you're gonna say processed food.
There's two, two different definitions based on.
You're in the same government that USDA is, you're gonna go by their definitions.
But we also are regulated by what are CO-MOR regulations and how that is interpreted.
I think it's the word hazardous.
Yeah.
Several times, what do you mean when you're saying hazardous food items?
Milk, if you make a sandwich or thing, anything like that, you're processing, making it, it's, it's really more than just, it's really anything that's truly prepared, processed, that has the ability to cause foodborne illness.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, by the way. I think the issue here, I don't want to get off, off track. The issue here is whether or not you want to go with the proposed permit. Well, it's not to do with, we're not, we're not, I mean, we can always have a separate work session to evaluate the health department processes and whether or not they're doing their job.
This was just my opportunity to promote a, the draft. I'm happy to come back and have further conversation.
First step, right?
He's, you know, let him, if, you know, if he needs to prepare for something like that, we can have a separate work session. Right now, we're just talking about the permit, Joe. I have another question. If I read this right, this means every restaurant in the county would have to have this permit, because they're buying fresh produce off of a vendor. They could buy fresh produce from a farmer's market or from a farmer or from Cisco, as far as that goes.
You don't need a permit to purchase food.
But they're selling it, though. The restaurant's selling it.
And they have a permit that.
But they don't have this permit, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
That is two completely separate and different things.
Matthew, have we, the 20 to 30 people that receive the permits currently, right, they're the.
And that's my estimation.
Right, that's your estimation?
Yeah.
Do, obviously, you know who these people are. Have, have, are they made aware of this potential switch?
Uh, I believe that we've had pushout communication through this last year. We can, we can reach out. Like I said, this was brought to me by my food side supervisor that we were currently inadequate in this field and we're not meeting what Comor regulations are. And this was our attempt to bring up Wacomiko County Health Department into offering a Comor regulated item that, that our surrounding counties all have an issue.
Now, can we get a list of those 20 to 30 people?
I'm happy to be able to provide.
Can we just make sure that we get those people aware of this situation? That way, we can start hearing some feedback on what they think about it as well.
We don't want to be accused of putting the farmer's markets out of business. The question, on the temporary permit, did you say it was a 30-day temporary permit?
It's 30 consecutive days. So it's how long you have to operate when you have a temporary.
If the Camden, if the Camden market, are they required to get 12 a year then? If they, if they're open every month?
I think right now, we've kind of allowed it to be an extension process, but that, that's breaking what, what our regulations and permits.
But as the regulations are now, technically, they could be paying 12 different $75 charges.
They could be.
And this guarantees that it's only $100 for the entire year?
Correct.
Okay. Now, so the council's aware, just depending on how we might choose to move forward, there would still be a public hearing. We would still want a public, I'm assuming it would be a resolution, correct, Mrs. Hurley?
Yeah, I would think that council would want to approve it by resolution.
And we would, we would, though it's not required, I would say we would have a public hearing anyway to address Joe's concerns and James' concern. So it's not as if this is the final time that this is gonna come before us as a discussion. So I just want to make that clear for everybody. We'll have plenty of time to vet.
Correct.
The true issues in the future.
This was just the first, the first iteration and wanted to get it on, on the table for our discussion.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, James.
No, 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 no. I've had plenty.
Matthew, thank, uh, thank you for coming in today. Is this gonna affect nonprofits and fire departments and churches? Having bake sales and chicken barbecues and?
No, they, they all have their own separate Comor regulations that they fall under. This is just specifically for vendors who operate at farmer's market that go outside of what the approval is for farmer's markets. And you should be able to see right there at the top the, the four list of what is approved under a farmer's market, under Comor. Anything outside of that is when we would be requesting these individuals to apply for this permit.
Can you share a question?
Yeah, I was just going to emphasize that I would definitely think the council should know who these people are, and I would encourage, I, I would, I would like to make this something that needs to happen, is that we need to communicate with these people just so they are fully aware of what is going to happen, what could happen. And it's, it's, it's not like this is a terrible thing. This is just something that needed, they need to know, because then they'll come in here and they'll be really upset with us. So, that's it.
We understand.
And I would suggest too, in light of what Councilman Holloway was discussing, and Mr. Robinson was suggesting, that there should be a principled checklist of inspections, I would think, so that you could say, okay, you know, in March, we inspected these six places. Here's the checkoff of what happened, whether it was Camden or whether it was off Route, Route 13. And that way, you would instantly know, yes, everything is inspected and it's checked off. New vendor, not a new vendor, however you may do it. If you would possibly want to get back to us with.
Yeah, I, I have it in our electronic system. I just didn't know I needed to have that prepared. So I do apologize.
If you want to get that to us, that would be great. That would probably help, help answer a lot of questions for everybody.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Counsel in favor of moving forward with this?
Yeah, sure.
Good? Okay, Joe? You okay with? Okay. So, thank you very much for coming in. Mrs. Hurley, I'll get it together and try to help you as far as how the resolution will come about.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. McConaughey. Entertaining a motion to adjourn from the local board of health and reconvene in the legislative session with the Wacomiko County Council. Some move? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, Jamie Manning from Life Crisis is here for the proclamation, if we're ready to do that.
Did you tell her it was too late?
I did not.
That's very, that's, that's excellent. Very good. You should be up here. So we now will have a proclamation to recognize Professional Social Work Month. And who's reading this proclamation? Josh Hastings is reading the proclamation. If you'd like to go to the podium there. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for understanding. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Fine. You're not the first. It's okay.
I was hoping Jill was gonna be here, she's actually my cousin.
Oh, I've got her doing lots of work.
Tell her cousin says aye. Here, proclamation for Professional Social Work Month, whereas for decades, the social work profession has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. Where social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help alleviate power, alleviating empower, giving them the ability to solve problems, cope with personal roadblocks, and require the resources they need to succeed. Whereas, social workers are active in government schools, universities, social service agencies, communities, corporations, and military, health and mental care facilities across the globe. Now therefore, the Wacomiko County Council hereby proclaims March 20, uh, 2025 as Professional Social Work Month in, here in the county, done this 18th day, March 8, uh, March 2025, signed by entire county council. If you'd like to take a word?
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you again for understanding our delay. We have social workers everywhere in the community and Little Life Crisis. We have 56 staff that do that work every single day. We operate 24/7. And last year alone, we served over 62,000 individuals, whether it was through counseling, a safe place to stay in our safe house, legal representation, and so on, our CASA program. We do a lot of hard work every day that some individuals never know about because it's never touched their lives. So I appreciate you taking, today is actually National Social Work Day. We like to celebrate the whole month. We're special like that, but we just appreciate you taking the time to recognize that. So thank you very much.
I'm sorry, did we get your name?
Jamie Manning.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Take a picture?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concern.
Hello, I'm Carol Dunnehoo. I am here today on behalf of the Wacomiko Environmental Trust and the Friends of the Nanticoke River of Salisbury and Nanticoke, respectively. And I'm accompanied by Christian Atti, who is our great intern from SU this semester. And he's passing out, or he's, I think he's given you, Mrs. Hurley, a copy of our written statements. We're here to talk about the recent discussions of the new bio-reginery project that's been proposed for Hickory Mill slash Atkins Road area. And we're here to speak in support of both the residents of that neighborhood and the work order that's been issued by the county, the, the stop work order that's been issued by the county, I should say. You know from our past statements that, that our organizations do support sustainable methods of processing organic matter, as long as they're designed and operated in a manner that protects public and environmental health. But those facilities also need to be properly cited in accordance with our zoning code and, and the applicable laws of the state and the federal government. We don't have adequate information yet about this particular proposal to evaluate its design or the track record and expertise of the people who have proposed to operate it. We're not passing any judgment on that. But we do know that this, this particular facility would be an industrial facility and that it's inappropriately cited in an agricultural and residential zone. We're aware of the fact that the original permit application said that it was a farm storage structure, which turned out to be inaccurate. And, and the characterization, it doesn't change that fact. It's illegally cited in its current location. It's not relevant either that the, that there were certain environmental permits issued by MDE and MDA for a similar facility in a completely different part of the, part of the county. We understand that those permits have been transferred to this new site in a different part of the county without any notice to county officials or residents. And they, this permit requires its own county building and use permit issuances, review and issuances. And so we think the county has done the appropriate thing in stopping work so that this can be further reviewed. It's being heard, I understand, on March 27th. And we appreciate the timely action of the planning department on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mikel Darlene Delmar, and I just wanted to add my absolute support to the statements that were just made by Wacomiko Environmental Trust. Moving on, we have an accountability issue here in our county. It stems largely from the executive branch, but it ripples across all facets of our local government and gravely impacts the political and community issues we face as constituents. So many controversial issues arise, and we never learn about how they are resolved or what the outcomes are. In the year and a half that I've been an unwitting bystander to things I never dreamed were possible in the place where I live, I've seen this play out time and again. The next fire has started, and everyone moves on, forgetting the previous fire. Just before the election, and again right after, I put forth that many of these issues could be addressed if the executive would operate under the same rules of accountability as the council. She shall hold biweekly public meetings for which an agenda and a briefing book is produced and made available in a timely fashion to be reviewed by constituents. These meetings should be aired on PAC 14 with public comment accepted at the podium. Can you imagine how far this would go to keep taxpayers from being blindsided by actions and MOUs that are enacted with zero public comment or insight? Can you imagine how much more public participation and buy-in could be gained thereby avoiding costly, frustrating, and contentious clashes? Right now, my community has lost over a year of our peace and well-being when we are blindsided in just such a way by just such a unilateral action. Fostering a dedicated and structured public forum for the executive branch, such as already exists in the legislative branch, would go so far towards preventing this situation from happening again. I have put this to the county executive in writing and set it before the council several times before, and months later, no progress has been made. I will continue to bring this up because I believe it is needed for a fair and just executive governance structure. Furthermore, I have raised an alarm with both the executive and legislative branches about what I strongly believe to be a civil rights violation and the dissemination of county information to constituents. I've made my concerns very clear, and I'm waiting on definitive answers I have not yet received. I have now filed Public Information Act requests after being denied direct answers to my questions and then protesting this denial. I've been informed that the cost for this PIA may run up to $600 to obtain information that I asked for directly. Unfortunately, my husband and I faced the same situation when we tried to get documents related to Safari at the quarry. Our PIA request was deferred, parts were denied, we were made to jump through hoops, and it cost us nearly $200. We had to enter state mediation, a process which took months. Ultimately, we were still denied certain documents due to attorney-client privilege, the client being the county executive and the attorney being the county attorney, both taxpayer-funded positions, standing behind privilege to deny information to the taxpayers. It shouldn't be like this. Citizens shouldn't have to spend their hard-earned money to receive answers that should simply be given. Citizens shouldn't be left in the dark about outcomes of the endless controversies. Holding the executive branch to the same level of accountability and transparency as the county council through biweekly public meetings, agendas, and briefing books, and public comment, all aired on PAC 14, is the right place to start.
Ms. Darlene?
My name is James Darlene from Wacomiko County. I wanted to make the public aware that over the last year or more of myself attending council meetings, our county executive, Julie Giordano, never really does. She's here roughly guessing 5 to 10% of the time, if that. Conversely, I've attended many of her own meetings, and several of our council members do attend, though there is always such short notice of those, and they are few and far between. I'd like to invite the public who are watching remotely on PAC 14 or YouTube or reading the meeting minutes to attend or reach out. We can help you understand more of what's going on in this county. We need you to help keep our government accountable. Thank you.
Ms. Darlene?
Jim Atkins, Wacomiko. I want to start with the Wacomiko County Executive's 26 proposed budget. Very pretty, 14-page, front, back, colored pamphlet that was handed out on the town. This wasn't a budget meeting. This was a town hall for the Board of Education. That was all that was talked about, except when our state's attorney discussed the need with the increase in number of cases that they handled for more staffing to handle that. So maybe sometime, we'll have a proposed operating budget meeting where we can see what the proposals are, other than just a public hearing. Council recently passed a county vehicle legislation requiring decals on the side of all county-owned cars. 60 days after that legislation was passed was March the 10th. I've been looking at county vehicles, and there's only one that I can find that does not have seals on the doors as written in the legislation. And that is the county vehicle driven by the county executive. So possibly, when you do your budget, maybe you need to defund the county executive's vehicle, since they don't want to follow the law vehicle since they don't want to follow the law that the council has passed. I'd also like to ask the council if there is a way that they can get involved or something can happen regarding the liquor board, that there could be possibly public notices when openings are available for the liquor board so that the residents of the county know that there are openings and they can participate in the liquor board rather than the county executive submitting names to the governor for an organization that is not even a county organization. So maybe something can be done to get some public notices out there. The last and final thing, because I'm going to cut this real short today, is I want to welcome Mr. Karpinski back to the county to be a county employee. For those who don't know and are watching, Mr. Karpinski used to be a county attorney, was fired by the county executive, was accused of costing the county money because of his actions, and the county executive filed disciplinary charges against him with the state. Welcome back. He's been rehired. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments. Joe?
Yeah. I attended this, it wasn't a budget meeting because we haven't got the budget yet. It was an interesting meeting. It's probably like all the other prior budget meetings that happen, you know, the Board of Ed, you know, they get their folks out, and some other folks attend. The interesting thing about this one was that I found, and I won't go into it, somebody wants to look it up, it's online, county executive put out these four options. The first option was basically fully funding the Board of Ed to whatever their ask is and defunding other departments in the county. Now, I don't know why anybody would even put that on as an option in the first place, but to go farther, the president of the Board of Ed and one of the prior members of the Board of Education got up and endorsed that option. I think they were the only two that endorsed that option. But they were willing to defund other departments so the Board of Ed could get their ask, whatever they wanted. Mr. Cannon may address this later, I don't know if he will or not, but he made a very good point when they made this presentation. They did not include anything on our income taxes. All they were using was property tax. To use an example, I think it was $325,000 house. If you're, you know, if we busted the cap or whatever they wanted to do, taxes would only go up a couple $300 or something like that a year. Not a lot of houses in Wacomiko County now are worth less than $325,000. There's a lot that are, but I would say most houses, you know, that's a good average for a house. But nothing was included in there about businesses, what it would cost businesses. You know, if you take a house that costs $325,000, a normal-sized business, their property may be worth a million or two million or whatever. So that was not included in that meeting either. But that one thing, that option one, really fascinated me, why somebody would even put that as an option, and then to have the school board president and one of the prior school board members stand there and say, "We agree with that." So anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
I had a productive town hall meeting just a few weeks ago. Mr. Merritt came, Vice President Merritt came, and the executive was there. And I feel like we got a lot of productive conversation, and we had some members in the audience in there as well. And we talked about the 50 intersection on Rights Market, on how that's going to turn out. From my recollection, they should be starting it this winter, the latest in January. And then we talked about the West Metro Court property on Levin's Shield. And from my recollection, it seemed to me that there wasn't anybody in favor of a park being built there. And if there is a potential for us to change, like redesignate that land to the Connolly Mill property, that the people were actually, it seemed to me that they were in favor of that. Whether the executive branch sends Steve Miller over with the redesignation or not, that's up to them. I think they will, but we will have to see how that works out. But I just wanted to say I appreciate everybody that attended. I think we had 40 to 60 people there, a lot of really good discussion and input, and I hope to do another one soon. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, everybody for coming. I always want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing their concerns. I'm being told it's budget season. I think we're all pretty well aware of the local and state issues that are going to create quite a wrestling match. There's a lot of talk about grant funding. We keep hearing about that. One of the questions we always ask, or I always ask when we are discussing a grant fund proposal, is, is there a local match? Is it renewable? And what are we going to do if we get a grant for $100,000 and the project ends up being $150,000? Who's going to come up with the other 50? So those are the things we look at. Grant funding is not free. It just comes out of a different bank account and a different agency, that's all. But taxpayers fund the grant funds. There's a lot of talk about breaking the revenue cap. I am absolutely not convinced that that's going to be the answer to the problem. I do know that throwing money at a problem doesn't necessarily make it go away. Last week, I had to go to Annapolis on Wednesday to testify in opposition for House Bill 1554 and Senate Bill 1045. That's the business-to-business tax that is theoretically going to create, if it's passed and the governor signs it, is going to create a billion dollars in revenue that would, in theory, be applied to education. 124 people testified on the House bill, not one in support, except the bill sponsor. Eighty-two people testified on the Senate bill, not one in support, except the bill sponsor. So keep that in mind as we watch this bill get passed. So this is definitely an anti-business bill. Maryland ranks 41st out of 50 in business-friendly states. If this bill passes, we will lose business to the surrounding states, Virginia, Delaware, West Virginia, Pennsylvania. When those businesses leave, they will take their payroll taxes and property taxes with them. That's going to create a loss. The businesses that remain are going to pass this cost increase on to the consumers who, last time I checked, they're having a difficult time paying their electric bills. So with regards to this money being applied to the education, I'm old enough to remember that we heard the same story for the Maryland Lottery, and we heard the same story about the casinos. And here we are. I do want to thank the team at Wacomiko Clean and Green SBY. They continue to clean up our county one pound at a time. I think the past weekend's results were just over 1,500 pounds by 40 volunteers in the Jersey Road Naylor Mill area. It was great seeing that many people come out. Speaking of trash, there's a solid waste workshop Wednesday, the 19th, at the Civic Center at 6:30 PM. Please come out and be a part of that, listen to what they have to say. They can bring us up to date on what's going on at the landfill and the things that are going on over there. And I think it was previously stated, the appeals hearing for the biorefinery is the 27th at 6:00 PM, right here in this room. So if you have any thoughts or concerns, please come out. That's all I got. Thank you.
I just want to touch on the revenue cap real quick. Jeff talked about it some. I am against breaking the revenue cap. We all know the federal government's making cuts, trying to save money. The state of Maryland is millions and millions of dollars in the hole. All of those are going to end up getting put on the counties. You know, we're talking about now having to take on the teachers' pension system. I'm not for breaking this revenue cap because it's just going to increase our citizens' taxes. Sometimes you're going to have good years, sometimes you're going to have bad years. This is a year we need to tighten our belt. The county's going to have to tighten their belt. We don't need to look for how can we spend more money, we need to look how we can save money. You know, I worked for the county for 25 years. During those years, there were furloughs, there was no raises, there were cuts, and then there was years we had great raises, and things were great. This is going to be a year we're going to have to tighten our belt and stop looking for ways to spend more money and save some money for this county. That's all I got.
Thank you, James. Josh?
Just a real quick, since James mentioned his town hall, I do want to mention, trying to finalize hopefully today, a District 4 Town Hall on April 24th. So I'll confirm with everyone and send that around in case folks are able to attend. And I do see Mr. Robinson in the back with Mardella shirt. I did want to also mention, I want to publicly thank Warren Rosenfeld of Rosenfeld's Jewish Deli. He paid for the bus trip for the Mardella students to go to the Holocaust Museum in DC. It's really great to have citizens stepping up to do that for five. Five, oh wow, look at that. Yeah. So anyway, that's the kind of stuff that I just really grate, thankful for the citizens and folks who actually step up to help engage. You know, that's not taxpayer dollars, that's someone choosing to do this out of what they believe in. And other than that, I just want to say thank you for everyone for coming out and for listening in.
Under presidential comments, I would agree with pretty much what Joe had stated and what Mr. Atkins stated. I attended the public hearing for the budget. I was somewhat surprised because it seemed like the focus of the budget was nothing more than how are we going to bust the revenue cap? You know, there were other pages that were attributed to other incomes and other expenses, but for the most part, the subject matter ended up being nothing more than four options. And those four options were simply about ways in order to bust the revenue cap in order to pay for education. I thought it was a limited narrative. And what really surprised me was that in the documentation, it said the projected property tax revenue for fiscal year '26 is going to be $1.6 million, and the Board of Education is asking for $7 million. So how are we going to solve that problem? Right? Then you got your four options. Well, we don't really work with options in this, you know, in this government. You know, the executive passes a budget, this council decides what it wants to do. The four options, what that left out, which was, I think, somewhat disingenuous and a disservice to the public, was that it didn't tell you that there was also another $70 million that we get from income tax receipts and recordations. So why wasn't that option number five, cut some of the departments in order to fund education? Because that is normally option number one, two, three, four, and five. So I agree with what Councilman Baker said as well. I, you know, the revenue cap is here for two purposes, and I have no intentions whatsoever of busting the revenue cap. The two intentions of the revenue cap, the first one is to make sure that Wacomiko County spends within its means. What's more important to me is that it's important to have a revenue cap in place so that we do not allow your taxes to go to such an extreme that it makes it almost unaffordable and unsustainable for families to exist. What that means is that with a revenue cap, when assessments go through the roof, fortunately in Wacomiko County, the revenue taxes, the assessments have gone up so high that your income tax is going to be equally as high. But the revenue cap forces us to lower the tax rate. In other words, the tax rate, I believe, is now 84 cents. I think it's projected to go down to 80. If we were to go along with these four options, it would probably stay at 84, or it may be what was presented last year. And I'm, this is paraphrasing to a certain extent. Last year, let's say it was 90, and it could have gone down through the revenue cap, would have forced it down to, let's say, 96. But the executive put it down to 98 and sent out a press release saying, "I've lowered your taxes." But what was, and this is exactly what happened, but what wasn't told, and what we issued as a second, our own press release, was that the executive did not lower your property taxes to the extent allowed by law. So you were short-sheeted about two cents until this council went to great efforts to make the cuts necessary to restore the revenue cap, giving everybody the full benefit of a full tax break, and at the same time, still full funding Wacomiko County. So I don't think there's anything wrong at all with putting more taxpayers into the pockets of the actual citizens that work so hard, you know, every day in order to earn a living. And we all have seen how exorbitant these tax assessments are now. Property taxes are increasing, in some instances, well above 100% of a prior year, easily above 100%. So whatever you may have paid the prior year, if the tax rate, if we didn't have a tax cap, you know, you'd be doubled, your property taxes would be doubled. Fortunately, we have a tax cap that will lower the county's rate so that you will not be subjected to such a large increase in your property taxes. So that, to me, is the conservative approach. And that's what this council has always taken, is a very conservative approach in how we're going to budget and how we're going to impact these citizens with the taxes that they could be subjected to, but how we try to make them as fair as possible. So again, I agree with what Councilman Baker said and Vice President Merritt and Councilman Holloway said. Do not believe in busting the revenue cap, causing the people in this day and age right now, where we're in close to what a recession would be and high inflation that we're subjected to right now, also subjecting them to higher taxes. So that's my whole line. So entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into closed session. Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Hold on. You said closed session, you mean open work session.
I'm sorry, open work session. Thank you, James. So we can go into open work session.
Aye. So move to second.
Motion second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item on our open work session is Wacomiko County litter control efforts. We have Mr. Mark Ingberg here and Bruce Robson, I'd like to thank you here, and I know Mike Spavy is here as well.
If we're going to go to work.
Yeah, we want to make this fun, you know. Everything in here is too serious. We brought one for you too, Mike.
Oh, you did? Did you really?
If we're going to be on PAC TV, we want to be colorful, you know.
Right, right.
Is that black and white or is it colorful? I'll go anywhere. Where are you going? Okay, let me sit next to Laura because...
Oh, I'm sitting here, so you can sit there.
Oh, am I going to control the slides?
You are.
Wow. Do I have a time limit?
You do not.
Okay. Yes, tell them yes. Five hours.
Mark Ingberg, Wacomiko County, lifelong resident. Really appreciate everybody here. As you know, we're focused on trash and litter in Wacomiko County, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Appreciate, you know, getting us on this work schedule very much, and appreciate your dedication to the county. It's hard work, you know, really trying to make this a better place to live. Five of the councilmen have been out on cleanups with us, really appreciate that. I wish Shaney was here today because we made a very concerted effort to clean up an area she wanted from Lake Street all the way up to Naylor, and it was actually two tons once we got, it was 2,000. It was, oh, I'm sorry, one ton. 2,080 pounds is what we pulled, refrigerators, tires, furniture, you name it. Jeff is a core volunteer, Vice President Jeff Merritt. He's been at almost every single cleanup time and time again, so he is an official garbage goon, so we appreciate that, Jeff. And I want to thank the Public Works Department, especially Jennifer Albarro. She's been out to clean up. She was trying to load a refrigerator this weekend. I'm like, Jennifer, come on. Mike Spavy, who's here with us, Adam Corey, Scott Green from the Roads Department. They really care about this issue, and we certainly appreciate that.
And you have the Darlene family here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, and people in the audience, the Darleens. Sarah Lee Monroe is here. We have some people who've helped with the cleanups. Yeah, the Darleens are very, very dedicated, and they've done quite a few on their own too. So our little group started about a year ago, and it was just four of us, my wife and Bruce and another friend. In our last cleanup, we had approximately 40 people. Let me see, what's the best way for me to...
You can use the arrows.
Use the arrows. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Look at you.
I know, I'm so techie. So we had about 40 volunteers. So we've gone from four people to 40. So we had about 40 volunteers, so we've gone from four people to 40. And, uh, we've got a lot of momentum. We have all kinds of groups reaching out to us, asking for cleanup opportunities. Here's the Dahliens to my left. To the right is, uh, I forget the lady's name, she's heading up Salisbury Green now with another core volunteer. Christine Main, yeah. So we've got a lot of community involvement, collaboration. And, and this is our mission. I mean, our goal would be Wycomico is the cleanest county on the shore. Wouldn't that be a wonderful thing to say? It really would. So Jennifer Albaro has given us the data. We pulled about 15 tons of litter. We've hosted about 35 cleanup events. We, our Facebook page is over 500 people, and we estimate at least 150 people have come out and helped us, including five of the council members, the mayor, various people from departments. So that's our little Facebook page, and that's driven a lot. James has helped organize all the cleanups in all the various locations and, um, yeah, so over 35 cleanup events. Greater Salisbury Committee, the Chamber of Commerce have helped fund our signage. We actually do need some more signs, uh, the yellow ones, but anyway. And Jeff's worked with us on that. So, I mean, this is just an example of roadside litter. It's really insurmountable. It's not just litter, it's illegal dumping. We've got to change the culture that people, I, I don't know why it's acceptable to, you know, just throw a refrigerator. New Year's Day, Jeff pulled a bowling ball out by the center. It's, I mean, it, it's insurmountable what you can find. This was out at Naylor Mill Road area. This was a 1,700 pound day. So, you know, pretty typical to pull 1,000 pounds of garbage. So, you know, why are we passionate about this? You know, aesthetics? You know, we do want this to be an attractive place to live. Economic is incredibly important. You know, I drove over here today from Rehoboth Beach. I live part-time and work in Rehoboth Beach as an investment advisor with Charles Schwab. Why am I in Delaware? Because of the affluency, the money. It's a very wealthy area. And our affluency here is low, we know that. And how can we create more affluency to make this a desirable place to live? If people come here, I just drove in today, I'm going back when I'm done, from Forest Grove Road all the way to Hobbs Road, and we cleaned that last year, and we cleaned Walston Switch, we cleaned Forest Grove. It's trashed again. My drive in today from Forest Grove all the way to Purdue Stadium was horrible. And that's pretty disheartening because we have cleaned it up. So there is a big economic impact to, you know, having a clean environment that people can appreciate. And again, it, it, it's harmful. We look at the ditches full of plastics, and that's going into our drinking water. Councilman Hastings knows more about that than I do, but harmful microplastics are really a concern. So this data comes from the Sierra Club. They estimate we're ingesting almost a credit card's worth of plastic every week between beverage containers or groundwater. So we've had a huge amount of collaboration, which is wonderful. I think people would like to make an improvement. You know, the mayor, we, we need to keep collaborating with the city of Salisbury, Public Works, um, Greater Salisbury, the university, Chamber of Commerce, and state roads to some degree. We talk about economic costs. I just got a, a thing about the state roads right now has Operation Clean Sweep to clean up the highways for the spring. And they estimated last year, they pulled over 400,000 bags of litter off state highways costing them $17 million. That was a state figure for the state highways. So there is a cost to cleaning up. And, you know, we're trying to help, and we've got a lot of great ideas to continue to help. This collaboration with SU, uh, Mike Spavy was instrumental in getting this together. They could probably speak more about the, when that's going to be presented in the final results. I think they want to present that to the council. It was a very professionally done survey in English, Spanish, Creole, so they're really working hard to gather some good data for us. So again, volunteer groups, as I said, we've got so many requests for cleanup events now, we can't keep up with it. It's a full-time job. We've got a list this long of people saying we want to help. Churches, civic groups, SU in a big way. This was New Year's Day. We, great turnout, it really was great, uh, very inspiring. But I drove out to the center of Salisbury just last week, and from Zion Road all the way up to the, I think it's Rum, uh, Rum Runner, the, the apartment complex there.
Runaway Bay.
Runaway Bay. Absolutely trashed again. Abs, and we've cleaned that at least four times. That's where we started on New Year's Day because we were looking for something to do. And I said, you know, I've been out to the mall, and it's horrible, and people all shopping. I said, "Let's go out there and clean up the entrance, back entrance." We filled up my truck, four of us, in a matter of a couple hours, and we, and our, a light bulb went off. It's completely trashed again, Jeff, and, and you were out there New Year, that's where you found the bowling ball. Completely trashed. So we do have ongoing monthly meetings, good participation, city, county, state. Greater Salisbury is there. We're continuing to ID hotspots. It, it, it's difficult, we know. So, you know, how do you move the needle on this? You know, how do we make a difference? So the 10-year solid waste plan, which I know they're going to talk about probably tomorrow evening at the Civic Center, at the solid waste meeting, um, you know, we're requesting for a paid litter remediation specialist because we're not going to be able to sustain this effort indefinitely. There've been other groups that started and they've faded away. There was Restore the Shore, there was Stash the Trash, and, and they're gone. People like us, so we don't want to lose this. So, yeah, how do you change? You know, education takes a generation. You're not going to snap your fingers and, and educate people that polluting our landscape is bad. Enforcement is very difficult, but legislation can be more immediate. It can be. So there are a couple legislative initiative, initiatives. We're, we're not going to get terribly bogged down on that. You know, our main priority is trying to get a paid professional to spearhead what we're doing. And we're going to continue to drive the volunteer engagement and community involvement, but we need somebody that's really, I'm still working, you know? This is not easy to, to organize all this. You know, eventually, we're not going to ask today, but eventually we want to consider a countywide plastic bag ban. About half the county is already in compliance. People who live in the city, the majority of the shopping is up in the Route 13 corridor with all the big box stores. I live and work in Delaware most of the week. There's been a statewide bag ban. We call it single-use bag ban. The plastic bag may be bad, you know, the nomenclature. And it's really a non-event. It's a non-event. Once you get over it, it, it's not an issue. Nobody complains about it. If we really wanted to make a difference, this Maryland bottle bill would, would certainly help. So, again, the impact of plastic bags and the environment. I cleaned up in Fruitland just a couple weeks ago, and we've got an initiative for the Great Fruitland Cleanup I shared with Jeff just yesterday because people are starting to complain. And, um, the amount of plastic bags in Fruitland is absolutely horrific all around the Walmart and behind the shopping centers there. So this is data from the city of Salisbury. You can see before the bag ban on the left, or reusable bag elimination, whatever, the vast majority, 92% was plastic. After the implementation of that, less than 1% is plastic. And I know that's not going to solve the entire problem, but it is going to help. We were at the landfill. Adam Corey gave us a grand tour, which was fantastic. And he said, "Weekly, they're sending inmates all around Trash Mountain to pick up all the blowing plastic." It's not just single-use bag ban or single-use bags, but it makes up a majority of it. They tear up their equipment. We have a contemporary, somebody I've communicated with, we've communicated with people actually from all over the country, and this individual was from Texas, and they got a bag ban in their county. And they said their biggest supporters were farmers and cattlemen because the farmers, their fields were full of plastic bags, it was messing up their equipment, and it was being cultivated into their crops. And the cattlemen said the cattle were eating the bags and dying. And she said, "Our biggest supporters were cattlemen and farmers." I don't think we have a lot of cattlemen, but we have a lot of farmers. So eventually, I think we need to build more consensus around this, like James was talking, more town hall meetings, you know, to really build some countywide support where you're hearing a lot more in favor than opposing. You know, people don't like any kind of additional rules implemented on them. The bottle bill, I would love to see it get passed. Currently, only about 25% of beverage containers in Maryland are recycled. You can read the data there. You know, out of 5.5 billion beverage containers, only 25% are recycled. And this is at the Salisbury landfill. So these are to be recycled, and only a quarter of beverage containers. If, if you could imagine, look at the data here. On your left is states like Vermont and Maine and Michigan and Oregon that have implemented a recycling mandate, a, a fee, you know, a bottle deposit. You can see they went from 37% recycled aluminum to 75%. So what would that do for the landfill? Because we know the landfill is significantly under pressure. Plastic, 18% to 56, and glass from 19 to 66. So I don't know if you, as a council, would, you know, support the bottle bill, but I certainly do support it. So I got a current ask because, you know, we're, we're interested in, you know, discussion of this paid position, which we really need, but we really need more publicity around this. And like I reached out to, uh, Mr. Green from the Roads, and they put up a do not, it's just a plain black and white do not litter, $1,000 fine. Like in Delaware, they have a big blue sign, and it, it's, it's a landscape, and it, you know, we need something more catchy. And we really need to start getting some community aware. It doesn't have to be this, I just picked that little image and put it up there. And if there's costs associated with that, I have funding sources, personal individuals, businesses, foundations. If you tell me, "Hey, Mark, it costs, um, $100 a sign to have these made, and you guys come up with the logo that you want," I'll get it paid for. You know, you don't have to spend any money. You'll have to install them, but we need to do something more catchy. So that's an ask. You know, I would like to, you know, keep that on. And if you need these slides, Laura could get them to you. And Laura, that little video would, how?
It's on the desktop.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're so kind. You've got a great lady here, you know that, don't you?
Yes, we do.
And Lynn, we, let's give them both kudos. They actually run the show, right? And you, and you guys?
Literally.
Okay. So we had cleaned up this area. Is there volume or no? Doesn't matter. We cleaned up this area, this is Zion Church Road going across the overpass. It had already been cleaned. And when I talked to Councilman Cannon, he even said, "Okay, it's not just the bags, but people are using them as a vehicle to litter. People accumulate bags full of trash, and then as they go down the road, they find a convenient place just to launch them out the window." So all of these are individual bags of trash, and it goes as far as you can see. And we had already cleaned this up. I personally had cleaned that whole area, Sassy Lane. Next time I went out there, full. Okay. So anyway, that's all I got to say, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, same thing. Thank you all, um, for support, uh, in the past and, and I know in the future. Mark referenced the survey that Mike really initiated that SU has followed through on, and they, they really want to come present to the council. They're sort of constrained because of graduation, et cetera, but they're hoping in April or perhaps the first session in May. How would they go about getting on the, on your schedule?
You talk to Mrs. Hurley?
Okay.
With the amount of time that you all spend in the community cleanup trash, we can certainly spend a little bit of the time here to, to listen to whatever you have to say.
Enough. Well, they, they, you know, they've done a good job. They've gotten over 700, well, about 700 responses. And, and when we learned about the, the professionalism, what they're doing, this just isn't kids out there asking, "What are you doing?" But they're like following these national guidelines, they had to get it approved by a national organization, et cetera. So look forward to hearing what, what they've got to say. So, yeah, our, our ask today, our big ask is, is, is the one we've talked about, is a position. And, and we understand, I think that maybe Mike or even Adam has, has an update on, on that, um, hopefully positive. But a, but a position to, because as Mark said, you know, we've set the stage. I mean, I'm not here to, to toot our own horn, but the reality is, is we have set the stage for real progress. You know, we've got all of these organizations now who are interested, we've kind of like 17 different ones, et cetera, and we, we can't do it, or don't want to do it, you know? I mean, I, I could make it my full-time job in retirement, but, uh, I don't want to wear the seven hours a day, you know, et cetera. And so, you know, the, the time is now really to keep this momentum going and to make some real progress. Mark explained eloquently that we can only do so much. I keep using this term, it's like sweeping sand off the beach. We need to keep doing it, we need to keep doing it, but we also need, you know, more organization. This was a sample, um, a res, a job description that Mark put together. The, the things that can, that, that a person can do are endless, endless. We think of something every day, what if we did this? What if we did that? We just not, can't get to it. So at any rate, we, we feel like it's, it's time to move forward, and, and that's the way to do it, is to hire somebody. That's the first step. He talked about legislation. We are convinced that that is, might not be perfect, but there's stuff we got to keep looking at. So, yeah, thank you.
Joe and I are the veterans here. People say we've been around too long, but I will tell you that honestly, throughout this period of time, my first was 2000, Joe and I, we started in 2006. I had about a four-year hiatus during that, but never in that entire time since 2006 have we seen such an effort as similar, anywhere close to what you gentlemen have literally done on your own. I mean, this is a groundswell of support, and it absolutely amazes me to go out and see the work that's been done. And then you continue on, and then you're here today, which I think is, is fantastic. So be quite willing to try to see whatever we can do.
Well, thank you, because, you know, quite, quite frankly, we, we don't want to be, we want to be back here five years in this situation, or do we want to be back here five years and going, "Well, we just gave up." You know, we don't want to be on that list. Thank you, John.
So.
I think we got, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good, Joe. We'll get Mr. Spavy, hang on a sec.
Sure. You, you know, you said you've been at this a couple, a year now? You know, I noticed those mattresses that you had in the pictures there. I mean, I remember, it probably wasn't the same mattress, but we had, I think we had pictures of the recycling stations where they were dumping things at the recycling stations at the Civic Center and over on, um, Annie Coke Road. And it seems like this dumping problem kind of reared its ugly head, illegal dumping. And it's always been going on, don't get me wrong, I don't mean it, it's just happened, is when the recycling stations closed. Even though they were dumping things at the rec- recycling stations that weren't supposed to be there, at least they were there. They weren't alongside the road. So I think the closing of the recycling stations had a lot to do with the increase in litter alongside the road. The other thing we have is, you say illegal dumping. It's illegal, you know? Are we doing anything to, are you finding addresses? Are you calling the sheriff's department? Is the sheriff's department following up? You're shaking your head no?
No, I found a bag of trash right over on Glen Avenue, big bag of household trash. I really wanted to go through it, but I did. And I, there's mail. And I sent it to Randy Taylor, and he sent it to the chief of police. And chief of police was wonderful. He called me up and said, and I picked up all the trash. And he said, well, we'll go talk to the individual. They live over in Tamarack Village, but there's really nothing we can do because nobody saw them dump it, you know?
I've got a worse story. I found trash on Shavox Road a few years ago and called sheriff's office and they sent a deputy out. And they said they were, they were just going to call the county roads to come pick it up. And I said, there's mail in it. And the deputy said, I'm just going to call the, I won't say everything that was said. But anyway. So I called Gary Baker, and Gary Baker said they would address it, and they did. Unfortunately, they told the people that I was the one that turned them in. So I was getting these nasty, hateful phone calls and threatening phone calls. And so anyway, you got to be a little careful with that.
Jennifer Alberro was able to prosecute. There's been some significant dumping on Boundary Road. And she did say they took someone to court and they had to pay court costs. And they got one-year probation, I think. And, you know, we've talked to Sheriff Lewis. There's a couple other sheriff deputies that I communicate with. And the law enforcement is incredibly important. And we do need to have some examples, some high-profile cases that this person, you know, the community needs to hear more about enforcement. But we understand they have a lot more important things to do.
That's true.
And it's so hard to actually catch somebody. It's part of it. And education is part of it. And that's where this position, ideally going into the schools, junior achievement, talking to civic groups, it could, could really help. But anyway, we should let Mike talk, I think.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, hold on. Just one more, one more second.
Sure.
I just, before you say everything you're gonna say, but I was gonna ask, have you had the opportunity to go to Fruitland Council at all and discuss what you've been discussing with us yet? I'm just saying that might be something to
Yeah.
look into doing.
The answer is no, we have not. We have been before both Hebron and Delmar, just having gotten to Fruitland. We've been before the lower Eastern Shore Mayor's Association, you know, but that's one of the things, you know, that's on the list that, you know,
They've got a lot of those.
Fruitland.
Yeah.
We need to get to Fruitland.
Fruitland is, you know, it's a big area as well.
Yep, it is.
And they contribute a lot of the trash. And then the other thing is, is, I don't know, the LMB director isn't here, but I know that they do community organization. I don't know if Bunky can just relay this back to see if, you know, you guys don't want to do this full-time, but I think LMB is, there might be something in that department where they can handle the organization part of it. Because there's, I think they're supposed to do the community organization and they help with under-deserving areas and there might be grant funding or something. Bunky, do you know anything about that? Or is that something you want to look into?
Yeah, I'll.
Okay. All right, cool.
And what is LMB?
Local Management Board.
Oh, okay.
And it's a, it's a pass.
Oh, yeah, you, you sent us over there.
Yes.
Right, right, right. That would be great.
Yeah. So I'm just speculating here. It'd be nice if, like, they're probably not going to want to pick up trash, right? But they can help facilitate the events because you have a lot of following now. There's churches that do pickups. There's community organizations that do it. So it'd be great if you had help with the organization part of it, I'm sure.
That'd be great.
And that's all I have. I wanted to hear what Michael had to say, and then I had a question for you later.
Thank you for your patience, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Not at all. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Council and Wycomico Clean and really all the followers, you have indeed a very tough act to follow, what you've just said and the work you've done. We're here today to discuss the construct of a meaningful relationship between the county and a group that's basically teed off and scored a lot of points in this endeavor. And so we want to figure out how we can put our services together to progress even further and sustainably do so. So the question is, in the fiscal environment we're in, how can the county provide this level of support to ensure that education, research, collection, and disposal remains sustainable at a minimum? We don't want to go backwards. We don't want to have a group forgotten, get frustrated. We want to at least maintain the position we're in. I believe it was a council meeting or two ago, Public Works appeared before this body and requested a change to its workforce. And what, the details of what we asked for and were later granted was to combine two compliance inspectors at the landfill into one environmental compliance technician. And we were granted that, that approval to do that. The need for that position is just so great, I can't oversell it. I couldn't possibly oversell it. But nevertheless, we, we left here with your approval and we advertised for the position. And we had more than a dozen, I think it was, very, very qualified people apply for that role.
Michael, could you explain just exactly what that person does?
The, the environmental compliance technician?
Right.
Sure. I mean, for real details, there's, there's a posted job description on the website. But really, they're going to be in charge primarily with regulatory oversight. They're going to be sort of like an internal auditor. And the backbone to that effort has to be data and analytics compilation, recording, retaining, and reporting. So there's a substantial list with regular frequencies of reports that have to be filed with EPA and with MDE. And I won't bore you with the minutia of all that. But putting those together takes a substantial amount of time. And to succeed and have them correct and reliable, there needs to be good records retention, good record keeping. I mean, we typically, we have to go down and do, go around and do groundwater sampling on a regular basis. You know, we can't wait till the reports do and find out at that point. You're supposed to have 40 data points every, every month recorded somewhere. So that position, in addition to the technical oversight about regulations, will primarily be responsible for knowing what that data is, knowing the reporting cycle, compiling, storing, and aging that data appropriately. So leading into where I was going, you know, we've, we've succeeded in making an offer to somebody we believe is going to start on, I think on the 2nd of April. With the primary role of that person being more technical oversight and inspection, a large part of those duties also go into the data, the reporting, the compiling, for reports that are due to EPA and MDE. As of now, that reporting responsibility falls primarily to our recycling coordinator. And we do have people that we pull off their work on the hill in a lot of cases to go out and do the sampling. But she retrieves that data from them. She records it and properly stores it. So when we hire this person, we're going to, in effect, be able to take that reporting responsibility, as large as it is, bring it to a higher fidelity, respect to Jennifer and the role she serves. But the person that we've hired has the educational credentials that are relevant to a landfill and the environment. And this person that we've hired will be able to ensure that those things are properly collected, the data is stored and staged for reporting. Now, we've had multiple discussions between the county and Wycomico Clean, and they did give us a draft of what the job role could look like. So what we did was knowing that this data-seeking reporting and staging role will be basically shifted from the recycling coordinator to the environmental compliance tech, starting April 2nd. It will, in effect, free the recycling coordinator to go deeper into the programmatic elements. She already does. Now, I'm seeing, based on the items outlined in the proposed job description that Wycomico Clean gave us, I'm seeing parallels in the same types of things. We need to provide education. We need to provide outreach. We need to organize people, resources. We need to do follow-up for collection. We need to make it fun. We need to produce signage. We need to work with certain legislative things like fines and maybe bottle bills or bag bans, whatever, whatever comes up on the legislative environment. But good news is, there are many parallels, two of which, if you had these two documents side by side, you could compare them, public outreach and education, and trash cleanup operations. So with the implementation of this new position, and, and the recycling coordinator's scope of work being reduced by something that takes a lot of attention and time, I believe that the recycling coordinator will be able to give the litter program its due and, and bring it to the next level because she's already trained in and very successfully conducts these types of activities. I bet a week doesn't go by, she doesn't bring a tour of students, be they SU or elementary school students, to the landfill. She's constantly going to any venue where the county set up, and she sets up a booth. And she puts, puts out things that promote what we do. So she's got the ins programmatically and the venues already set up to be able to further spread the word about the act and organization of roadside litter. Another good, good point to this is that recently, I think it was the council meeting in January that got delayed for snow, I think it was the 7th and it ended up being the 9th, we brought to you the 10-year solid waste management plan. And that was sort of an iterative process. We had one or two sittings before that, maybe an open work session such as this. And you, quite frankly, you called us on a couple of things. And you said, I don't want lip service in there about these couple of topics. I want to see something real. So in that document, which you ultimately approved and is now with MDE for final sign-off, over the course of a 10-year plan, is the following excerpt. Anti-litter campaign. County plans to include managing the collection and disposal of litter. The public should be thoroughly informed of the litter problem, the fines that may be incurred for littering, and the programs that have been initiated to discourage its continuation. Now, the bones behind that 10-year plan are that every two years, we're required to go back to MDE and do some reporting on it. You know, if we had a to-do list in there, which we do have a pretty grand one, we have to go back and say, you know, there's no unexpected changes here. And by the way, here's how we're doing with our to-do list. So that's an opportunity, and even an obligation, to meet those things as we move along. So to me, we've got a report card set up to do this. It's not just incidental successes that we're having, like we are now, due to these fine folks and their organization. We're going to move forward with them. And we're going to help prop up the organization so it can be sustainable. But again, in, in the fiscal environment we're in, and it's more than fortuitous, based on this morning's agenda, it's, it's a have-to-do. Everything we do, we have to think about, you know, can we reorganize in some way? Can we establish at least a starting standard for this new concept with staff and cost that are already sunk to the county? So if we look at this in a fiscally conservative way, we should conduct a cost-neutral move of moving two positions into one, keeping the salary the same as those two positions were. That's done. Slightly shift the program duties for which there is an existing position. That's done effective April 2nd. Document the commitment to council, the public, and to MDE. That's done with the 10-year plan, with the two-year follow-up intermittently throughout the 10 years. With the duty realignment in place, expecting no additional cost, and a documented commitment slash report card, I think, I think we're really set up for success with this. And there's nothing stopping us from meeting again. And I would expect us to meet frequently to assess our success, much the same way we're expected to do with MDE. I would expect us to do it as a, as a group actively working together to see, you know, are there things we're just not able to get to? Things we're just not able to get off the ground. But sort of as a pilot fledgling concept, I believe the fiscally intelligent thing to do would be to reorganize these duties, and that's all but done at this point. And, and to have the existing recycling coordinator take, take on the work. There is one or two, there are one or two little nuggets I'd like to add, based on both, both some of the discussion from, from Mark and Bruce and one or two of the questions that came up. In terms of enforcement, you know, it's kind of difficult, with some successes, to get law enforcement to make an important issue out of prosecuting litter. We did have a recent one where there was fairly large public dumping. I'm sorry, I can't recall the location, but a roads person was called to clean it up. And they began to go through some of the bags and they found some addresses. So we got the sheriff's office involved. They did run it down. And that case, I believe, is scheduled to go to court in April. So we don't, we don't let those things go by if, if we're presented with the right amount of, of evidence and it ties to somebody. The second thing is, you know, recycling, if we, if we had recycling challenges that we weren't meeting, I wouldn't be proposing that we take the recycling coordinator and engage her in other duties. But I can tell you right now, and, you know, Adam can corroborate this if, if need be, but in our last tonnage report, we reported a diversion rate of 52%, not the required 20%. A good amount of that is due to, you know, the supplementation of inmate labor. And that could present some opportunities in another area, and, and I'd be happy to discuss that. But I would like the council to remain, rest assured, I should say, that we're doing the work for recycling. And the biggest part, the administrative part of that work, which the recycling coordinator was doing, is the MRA reporting. That piece will be pulled away and headed up by the environmental compliance technician. And with the actual recycling performance that we have, which is awful lot more than just Jennifer's role herself, I mean, there's people that contribute to that success, we are in a very good place to diversify that role as it sits. Thanks.
So I've said this probably a dozen times in the past 18 years. When county administration comes in front of us, whichever executive it is, and wants to raise the tipping fees at the landfill, I said, your problems with trash along the road are going to escalate every time you put it up. Now, I know it costs money to run the landfill, but it happens all the time. Every time that the tipping fees go up, the problems along the road escalate. Michael, a few years ago, four or five years ago, maybe less than that, on Friday's county roads, people went out and picked up trash off the road. Are you still doing that? Is that still happening?
We don't do it regularly, but we do get a large amount of constituent input for everything on the roads, including potholes, flooding.
Yeah.
And we often get calls about, you know, somebody lost more bags in the middle of an incident.
I'm talking about taking four or five hours and two or three guys and just going out and picking up trash.
Not routinely, sir.
You're not doing that anymore. Okay. On Mount Herman Road, a few weeks ago, I was headed to, toward Powellville, and I see this guy with a vest on, walking along, picking up trash, putting it in a bag by self. And I assumed it was a, just a citizen out there, you know? And then I go along, and I see these bags sitting along the road every, I don't know, quarter mile or something like that. I came back the next day, had to go to the same, the same location. He's on the other side, headed west, picking up trash. So I guess it was a state employee or for whatever reason, I don't know why. But he had that road cleaned up in two or three days.
I think it was Jerry Benton.
Yeah, whoever it was. But anyway.
Jerry is really dedicated.
Do we have one employee, one employee that goes out and picks up trash?
We don't have it dedicated as such. No.
Would that help to have one person dedicated for 35, 40 hours a week to pick up trash? I mean, what I'm seeing here is, I think what you said here is you've got enough employees now to head up what they're asking you to do. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would it help to have one employee, pay him by the hour, you can pay him by the ton he picks up? I don't care. You see what I'm saying? Give him a pickup truck or her, sexist there, it could be a female as far as that goes, and send them out and say, okay, leave here at 8 o'clock, see you back at 4:00?
I mean, it would help in the sense that for every bag they picked up, it would be a bag less on the street, yes.
I mean, it I mean, it just seems to me like, do we need the chiefs or do we need the Indians here?
Well, exactly where I was going to go with the rest of the answer. I mean, we can get a person to do it and, you know, a bag picked up is a bag no longer out there. But I think the way to do it is take whatever energy we have to do it and multiply the concept they've already done. And...
I'm not saying to turn that one away, you can still do that one, you know.
But I mean, if we have whatever energy I think we have to make the collection effort greater and to educate people to ultimately in a generation from now, get on the front end, hopefully change people's perspectives about some of this, all that energy needs to be spent on organizing the larger group of people to do it. Because picking up is only a chase, that's all it is. And sure, I mean, if we, we'd have 40 hours of handpicked trash by one full-time equivalent person. And I'm not saying that it's not important, but what's important, I believe, is an organized 30 people doing it or putting together some sort of incentive to attract more people to do this, make it fun. Do a contest, we had talked about doing that recently, we may roll something like that out here in the next month or two, to compete with another county and see who can pull up, you know, the most roadside trash. We need to make it fun, we need to make it incented, and that's what'll put the big dent in it. We need to grow the enthusiasm to fix it. Individual foot soldiers are, you know, provided they have a good work ethic and, you know, have a strong back, yep, I think it would help. But I think the best resources we can spend would be diverting the effort, not the picking up.
Well, of course, I want to say, of course, thank you, Mark and Bruce. And before that, you know, the Fonz Foundation, Craig Fonz, for years, I did it for a couple of years with my, you know, my wife was leading Salisbury, or SP, Green, SPY, sorry. You know, we've had these iterations of folks who are going out and picking up trash, and that's helpful. You know, I don't know how many Conservation Corps members the county has ever hosted, but there are a litany of these kind of positions that you can go after that are just a grant. I've hired multiple ones myself, and that's a 40-hour person work week. You get someone funded, they work for, there's a 10-month program and then there's a 12-month program, but those are ones where you could have somebody who could actually handle this kind of role, the county would oversee them. I don't think we want to pull somebody like Jennifer Albarro, who I know is doing a ton of work already. But I want to get back to these bigger pieces, of course, is that plastic is trash. I really can't stand the fact that every day I come up here and sit and I see these things sitting here. We used to not have these sitting here.
Table anymore.
You know, these are literally just going to go and sit on the side of the road. This is trash. And you all have heard me say before, this is, you know, this eventually, this doesn't break down, this becomes nanoplastics, it becomes microplastics, and eventually we are going to be breathing in this little piece of plastic here. Of this one, 400, you know, of 100 of these, only 4.2 or 4.6 of them will ever actually get recycled. Plastic is trash. And so we need to move away from that. And they're, yes, they're, additionally, we need to make Congress great again. The reason why we're not having this change, you know, they make plastic that is biodegradable. If you go to Rise Up, it is compostable plastic now, it's industrial compost, I get there's a difference there, but nonetheless, you go to Rise Up, there are things are made that's biodegradable plastic. If you go to the other local businesses, the plastics that are used are biodegradable, the vast majority of these are not. And if you go to any of these restaurants, quote-unquote restaurants, if you go to these fast food spaces, these are all, you know, this is all trash that's going to go right back onto the ground, you know, on the ground. That is, that they are working with our landfill in mind as part of their business, their profit motive. They make money by polluting, so the cookouts, the, you know, the Starbucks, you name them, go on down the list of all of those, they are markedly different than Market Street Inn, you know, any of the local businesses. They actually pay somebody to wash dishes. So to be very clear, there's two very different things here. So we can't really do anything, when I say make Congress great again, let me be clear, we need Congress to act to stop this kind of a situation where we are being inundated by plastics. I used to drink my, you know, the number of drinks, let me back up. As a person born in the early 80s, I didn't see plastic bags when I was a kid. And then in the mid 80s, we didn't have plastic bags. Then we got into the 90s, it was paper or plastic. You know, I used to cover my books in elementary and school with paper bags, that was all we had, right? Those are better. In this case, plastic bags are a real problem because the people put their trash into them, they tie them up and then they throw them off the side of the road. We can't really do much about changing public behavior, but at some point in time, we need somebody greater than all of the rest of us to turn off the tap of all of these. And I guess that's what, kind of what we're getting at, I guess what the state is trying to get at, I should say, with the bottle bill or these other, you know, plastic bag bans that are around. Delaware, the entire state has had a plastic bag ban for years, you know, numerous other counties across the state has. So I know there's probably not much we can do on the enforcement side of things. It'd be great if someone, you know, in the free market would invent a, they invented a speed camera, why can't we invent a camera that takes a picture when someone throws something out the door and put those in high, I don't know if that exists, but...
Well, on that front, not to disrupt what you were saying, but we did look into making use of an MDOT facility that aligns perfectly with Boundary Street, and they have given us some terms to be able to come back and put a camera there, and we fully intend to pursue that. So, you know, maybe we can put some points on the board there, catching people in the act, catching right information and prosecuting those.
Great. Well, I guess, I don't want to, I'll step off my soapbox here, but I guess in general, you know, I support the county looking in any and every way. We do, I want, I really appreciate the intent of us being the cleanest county, you know, we really can't do a whole lot about what's in people's parts and minds and their choice to throw things out. And we don't control Congress to stop them from allowing plastic to be, you know, completely inundate our society. But it'd be, if we can at least put, support, you know, if we can look at other innovative ways, like a Conservation Corps member, there are multiple programs, and I can be happy to tell and talk with anyone offline about that, it's very easy to apply and it's easy to host, local government and nonprofits can do it. And maybe that would help in this case to alleviate the organizing that especially Bruce and Mark are leading now. And then, and then lastly, like, I don't know what the next steps are. I mean, I personally, from the county, I would, I'd be happily to support the current bottle bill, if that was a letter or something like that we could send to the state, I'd be happy to support that. When I was like six years old, I had a plan to get rich and I was off of taking all of these, you know, bottles, these aluminum cans that I was picking up, and I was gonna, I was gonna, you know, I was gonna become rich that way, so I was saving, I had all sorts of bags. You know, I'm 30, or I'm 42 years old now. It'd be nice if we can some sort of way help limit this. I appreciate your, all your great work for the doing so. I don't, I don't want to over, you know, folks like Jennifer Albarro, I don't want to make sure that she's not over inundated and hopefully that they feel respected and appreciated. But trash is a big problem, plastic is a big problem, so.
Yeah, I'd like to interject. I don't know that Jennifer has, we love her, but the capacity to do all of this, I mean, it's very physical. Even if she was spearheading it, she needs someone with a strong back. I mean, Bruce and I get out there early, we set up, we run around, we coordinate all of this with supplies. It's very physical. And then to go back and gather literally 2,000 pounds of litter from Lake Street all the way up to Burnt Branch Road in a truck, in a trailer, it's hard work. You can't expect Jennifer to do that.
Saying that.
She could, she needs somebody that, someone else from the landfill to physically work with her. You know, she can't count on me and Bruce always being there to consistently help her do that.
She does have that component on the tail end now, when people actually go out and collect the collected bags. She has help and equipment provided to where we could certainly make that same component available now for the front end as this thing proliferates farther. I mean, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, we have a win, Delmarva Disposal, Caleb Elliott has been positioning his big dump trailer for us and then coming out and taking it. So we haven't even had to impose on county labor to get the garbage onto the landfill, which is a big win. You know, he's doing that out of the kindness of his heart. And so that's a big win, that's community collaboration. I'd be all in favor of Jennifer, although, you know, she would like to eventually retire, like myself, to be the coordinating effort of this, but she needs an additional county employee that is boots on the ground and is physically fit, that can do this. She can't lift a refrigerator, and she was trying to do that last weekend.
Michael, do you have any unfilled positions in your solid waste department?
We might have a few vacancies, yes.
So you pay, like the guys that, the folks that tend the, tend the, not recycling stations, but the, what do you call?
Convenience centers.
I call them the dumps, but anyway, the recycle, the...
The convenience center.
Convenience centers. So you pay them like minimum wage or something like that, somewhere in that...
$15, $16 annually.
I mean, do you have a position in your, in your position documents that would have somebody that you could hire to do that? One person, one pickup truck and send it? Do you have that ability?
We do, but I'm here to say that I don't think, we don't already have that level of physical commitment going on, we do.
Why isn't it being done?
It is, sure.
Yeah, certainly, I hate to interject there, I just listened to the conversation on the sidelines.
Public No CEO.
Sir.
Would you state who you are for the public?
Yep, Adam Corey, Executive Director of Environmental Services, Acting Landfill Superintendent. So as it pertains to the ability to, for us to coordinate and have staff members, including Ms. Albarro and others, to coordinate with Wycomico Clean to make sure we get this material off the side of the road, we have people on staff right now at the landfill that can be diverted. And when it does happen, you know, we are very fortunate that some other folks from the community have stepped up to come and grab the material that has been collected on the side of the road. But we have truck, trailer, and employees that we can divert from daily operations to go out and pick up what's there right now. We do it frequently.
Do it, right.
We do it frequently.
Well, I'm not talking about coordinating with, and thank God for what you're all doing, I'm just saying, one person, a pickup truck and some, and some bags, and send one person out and say, "Clean this road up."
I agree with you, Joe, and during the holidays, Jennifer asked us to back off cleanups because she didn't have people to go out and pick it up off the side of the road. They were too busy, people were on vacation, they're on leave.
I understand that, you're going to have laws and...
Yeah, there are certain times of the year, and of course, you know, during, right after Christmas especially, is the busiest time for the landfill, other than spring clean.
I see a pickup truck, county pickup truck parked where a mower has been parked the night before, you know, along the road. Okay, there's no reason why you can't, you know, somebody can't go out in a truck, park the pickup truck, get out of the truck with some paper bags and start working down, picking up trash. And then put that trash in the back of the pickup.
I would only, yeah, I agree with you there, Mr. Holloway, I would only say this, there are some Roads Division openings, and I do have a Roads Division opening at Solid Waste that we could dedicate one solitary employee. Will one solitary employee going down the road make the impact of the volunteer push that Wycomico Clean has?
I'm not talking about doing away with that.
Well, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is, I would rather put our efforts towards supporting what they want, which is truly a clearinghouse for organization of cleanups. Is that, that is clearly what you want.
A force multiplier to take, to grow that group, you know, geometrically from where it is right now.
Correct.
I mean, every volunteer they have is solely off the backs of people that they've recruited and got interest with. But if we, if we look into some things like Mr. Hastings was saying, you know, with Conservation Corps, I know there's another volunteer for, as I can't recall the name of it now, a large-scale one that's...
Merrick Corps?
Merrick Corps, right?
Volunteer Maryland, Merrick Corps, Conservation Corps, there's three other programs.
Notwithstanding what may happen to those currently, but those are all unexplored avenues right now that we, that's where energy is well-spent, that's where the investment will come back.
James, let James, let me, because he's been waiting a couple minutes here, sorry, sorry, Bruce.
Sorry, I haven't wanted to interject, but I wanted to ask Mr. Swavey, I know we talked in, Mr. Adam Corey, we talked on the sideline about the people that get work release or people that have DUIs or people that shoplift. Traditionally, before coronavirus, they were given 100 hours of community service, 10 hours of community service, and they would pick up trash on the weekends. And they would have somebody from the county corrections driving around and pick up trash. That has since stopped because of COVID, and now they put ankle bracelets on them. That's an issue. I think that is somewhere we can get a lot of help really fast. And from what you're telling me is the court is what's holding that up from, from happening again. And I think that's what we should pursue because throwing trash out the window has always been a problem. People are just, they're just people, they just throw trash out the window. I don't agree with it, I support everything that you all are doing, but I also want to see if we can't get something that is sustainable and if we can get a letter of support or anything we can do to go to the courthouse and say, "We need this change so that we can get a good supply of help." Because that's ultimately what we're trying to solve right now at this moment, is how can we get help to pick up trash?
Bruce. I think there was a suggestion by someone in the administration, it might have been, not in the administration, but Mr. Illuminati, that suggested that perhaps a different court jurisdiction would be more willing to do this, like for instance, whatever court DUIs and more serious traffic offenses are tried in. So, I mean, we need to explore that option, and perhaps they would be more willing to provide that as part of their sentence.
We actually had a, somebody out there Saturday who was there for assigned community hours. You know, I don't know enough about the court system to even know which, who it was who assigned him, but if he did it, I assume other people could do, could also, to your point. But, you know, to the thing about, you know, what are we looking for, you know, more help in terms of community services, that and the other, you know, the reality is, is that headcount is not a problem. When I say it's not a problem, now, when the inmates or the folks from the county detention center were there, I mean, they were out there two or three days a week, you know, and so you did have a larger scale. But still, whether it's adding one person or adding people from community, for community services they're assigned to, you know, that's going to help a lot. But, you know, we've got lists, a list of churches and civic organizations and political groups and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, who are willing to help, but we're just not able to organize or frankly don't have the, that much get-up-and-go to organize on a weekly basis, you know, I mean, because you could do it weekly.
There are opportunities.
And so, and so, I'm sorry, hang on a second, so I think that is important, you know, and we are looking for that. But the other thing is, is even that only goes so far. Are we, is that our, is that what we're going to do? We're going to say, "We're going to pick it up." We're going to pick all of the damn stuff up, week after week after week, ad infinitum? What are we talking about here? That is where education is important, where enforcement is important, we understand enforcement is limited and we don't want, we, I don't want our police spending our time going around looking for people littering, but I would like it, you know, three a month, something like that? Literally, I mean, if three a month, you could say, "Hey, look what happened to this person," you know, et cetera, okay? And the other one is legislation, you know? Now, the other part of enforcement, which maybe this person could deal with, is when the Dollar General is a pigsty, and it's a pigsty day after day after day, couldn't they be cited? Couldn't they be cited? You know, put out trash cans, you know, increasingly places don't have trash cans. So yeah, the volunteer, the force is important, you know, right now it is, but every bit is important to say, "How are we going to have a sustainable, actual solution?" Education is the most important, but it's slow, it's very slow, generational, 20 years? I don't know. But legislation and enforcement are going to go a long ways. And enforcement does not have to be huge, but there's incremental increases that can be helpful, so.
Good point, Shane.
I'm going to try to simplify this a little bit. So both of you, so both of you go out time and time and time again, pick all this trash up, which we all love and are tickled to death if you're doing it. But I think you two both have said what you would like to see is a county employee hired to help facilitate this. Is that right? Is that the meat of this right now?
It is, it is.
All right, hold it, hold that thought.
Sure, go ahead.
Now to you two gentlemen, are you not interested in putting in for a position like that? Or are you?
I believe that the moves that we've made, and they weren't easy to make, but we've put our heads together on shifting the roles around, that Jennifer is doing that type of work in other arenas. She's perfectly, the role is perfectly queued up to assume that responsibility.
Okay, I guess where I'm at, there are... Okay, I guess where I'm at, they're obviously thinking what we're doing's not working, and they're the ones going out time and time again and doing the work. I heard what you said earlier, that you do have one person you could dedicate. Well, with that being said, if you were to apply for another position, and we granted it, now we would have two people. I think it's very important that these two gentlemen, who I see in here time and time and time again, talking about all the good works that they're doing, that if they're saying they need some type of help that we can give them, we need to give it. We've talked and talked and talked and talked about this issue. I think it's pretty simple. They're doing the job. They're saying, "This is what we need to get the job done." I'm looking at you as a councilman, saying, "Hey, I would support another position. If you wanna put in for it, I'd support it, because I'm gonna support them. They're doing the work. They're out there doing it. If they tell me this is what I need, Councilman Baker, to, to, to make things move, work smoother, my God, I'm gonna back them. They're burning their own gas. They're probably spending their own money. They're spending time away from their families. I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars they're probably spending out of their own pockets. As a councilman, I'm gonna sit here and I'm going to do what I can do to support them. And I look at you two to say, "Hey, Councilman Baker, we need another position." And if you do that, and that's what they're telling me that would make things work better, I'm gonna go for it. I just don't want us to keep talking around in circles, like, "Let's, let's help these guys out. Let's get done what needs to be done." What, if they need legis, legislation, which I've talked to them about, I have no problem being involved in that. But, I mean, let's, let's get things done that we need to get done.
Could I interject? When we met with Adam, who is also great, initially, it discussed even a part-time position as a trial to, again, I, I don't think Jennifer has the physical capacity to do all the heavy lifting associated with this. And there's a lot of weekends involved, too. There's opportunities for weekday cleanups, like with S U, the Korean Association of Delmarva. So many people have reached out to us. And like Bruce was saying, this individual should be communicating with businesses. And, you know, why don't you have an outside trash container outside your store? Why is your store horrible, and we've asked you to clean it up repeatedly? I've, you know, have the ability to cite and to find these businesses that are helping create a lot of this problem. You know, even a part-time position, initially, we had talked about, and on a trial basis, and, and see how effective they are in, in helping Jennifer, because I just, this person could be boots on the ground. There is just so much work to do. You can see it day in and day out.
Mr. President, could, could we get a consensus vote to see if it's something that the council would consider if it's put in for, for another position?
I think the council's always been in support of it. Am I right?
Sounds like they're asking a different position.
Let me do this. Let me do this. Mr. Swaby, because we have to wrap this up, okay? And a lot of good points have been made. I think Bruce is, was the most poignant when he says cleaning it up is the pandate. We need to solve the problem, which is maybe education, enforcement, some, some means, but we have to do both at the same time until we come to a conclusion. My, my point would be, I think the public as a whole would endorse this no matter what. And that's who we work for, is the public. I would like Ms. Albarro, you say her, you know, by April 2nd, her, her position will be relieved of a lot of her duties. What if we were to have a president, if you would want to come back and have Ms. Albarro come with you, maybe on our second meeting in, our first or second meeting in May? I'll, I'll leave that up to you. That would give her four weeks, six weeks at the most, to come up with what she could maybe construe as a plan for Wycomico County, whether that means, I think we have to have more signage with the penalties and the fines on that, whether it's also, and we can email this to you, okay, so you don't, yeah, whether or not we do decide that we could find cameras that would be, that we could add to the roadways. And you have speed limit signs in different locations, a portable one with a camera, because cameras can pick up an awful lot nowadays. And you have a license plate and trash. You have somebody, just as Bruce said, you're only gonna need three or four of these at a time before people start realizing it doesn't pay to, to litter.
Right.
So she could, she could evaluate that. James has mentioned before, the incarceration issue, whether or not we could solve our problem there. James is suggesting that maybe the courts were holding us up on this, on what they may or may not allow. But it's worked before, and I think, I always thought the, the people who had ankle braces were staying home. They lost the incentive to go out in the field. I don't blame them. But somehow, to reconfigure the incentives for the incarcerated to go out into, no matter what it might be, to go out and to start cleaning up trash, and to start that program all over again, because I think it was successful. Adopt a street could be a possibility that we could do. It's suggested that businesses are willing to take place of this, so we could do that. And I think we should restore the recycling centers that were just taken away. You, I, I can't help but think that you take away the recycling center, you take away one recycling center, I guarantee you that hun, that 100% of trash that was in that recycling center is not gonna go to another location. It will not. You'll probably get maybe 75 or 80% of that, that may go to another location, but the other 25 is gonna get thrown away, either in the street or in the, in their garbage cans. So I think we need to restore those recycling centers. They were busy. They were full the entire time. It's ironic. The two, one on Annika Road and one in the Civic Center, the ones that I used, and they were always full. The biggest problem I saw was they weren't, they weren't being emptied soon enough. And then you end up having trash on the ground because, because nobody was servicing them. So I would leave it at that, but that, we'll send an email to Jennifer if she could consider those points as well, and then she could come back to us. She'd let us know whether you want to come back on the 6th or the 20th. The 6th is a night meeting. She may want to come back on the 20th, which is a day meeting. So, again, thank you, Bennett, very much. And you're, you're welcome anytime.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Adam.
Jeff, I thought you were gonna weigh in.
I did.
You've been boots on the ground forever. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mike Piper.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Adam.
See you nearby tomorrow night, hope.
Yes, sir. Thanks for putting that on. You want to, you want to publicly state what's tomorrow night?
Certainly.
Yes.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow night, Denang Room Civic Center, 6:30 to 8:30, Spring Workshop for Solid Waste. We're gonna be kinda taking the show on the road and tell everybody some really good news and bring some people up to date on some new things. So-
All right.
Good time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Next item we have on the agenda is the metal detectors for government office buildings. I know we have a few people here to, to help us with this.
Good morning again. Bunkie Lofman, Director of Administration. Some, I had asked Major Richardson to join me, and also Pete, our Head of General Services. And I know someone from the council had asked our State's Attorney to also be here as well for this discussion.
If you- Just barely. We're doing pretty very well. If you could do me a favor, from left, from my left to right, to state your name and position for the record, so we have it on the recording.
Certainly. Jamie Dyke, State's Attorney.
Pete Matthews, General Services Supervisor.
Todd Richardson, Major at the Sheriff's Office.
Bunkie Lofman, Director of Administration.
We appreciate you all being here.
Of course.
I think this came about with the fact that we realize, I know Vice President Merritt has concerns over the overall safety in this building. And we know that's a growing, a growing, I guess, set of circumstances throughout the country. We don't want to finally decide it's necessary after something happens. Hopefully, we can be proactive. I thought it was a very good recommendation. You know, we have a security station, Pete, downstairs, of course, in the lobby. The idea was possibly to move that over by the door, block the back door for employees only, and then have that entrance way, no different than the, than the courts, where we have a metal detector system there with someone who is at that door. So that's the premise. However you want to break it down, whoever you want, whoever wants to start, we'd be-
Well, on, on that proposal specifically, the concern would be the handicap parking is behind, is in the parking lot. So I think we would need to make an exemption for them. Otherwise, you would have folks potentially with mobility issues, and wheelchairs would have to go all the way around the building. So that, that was something that come up. But, but Pete and I talked about, I don't know, Pete, if-
I think parking is the whole issue with closing the back door. I think we can design something at the front door that would funnel people to one detector. Design something at the back door, inside the vestibule, inside the stairway, that would allow people to enter there and still have, my guys need access to get big stuff out. There are double doors at that exit. Yeah, there's only a single door going out. But a lot of times, you get it to the vestibule, you can work it around in different ways to get it out of the building. But the parking is gonna be the main issue with closing that entrance to anybody but employees. There are a lot of older citizens that come in to pay their taxes. They come in to do business with the city. And I'm not the only one sitting in this room that knows parking down here is almost non-existent. So if we close the parking lot completely off, that entrance completely off, I think we're digging a hole that we didn't need to dig.
Pete, if you had a camera back there, and the, the officer could still be at the front door, but have a camera so that when somebody, a, a handicap person buzzed in, they could see on the camera and then buzz them in? Possible? This is, we're not, we're not coming to solid conclusions here. We're just trying to throw it around a little bit.
That's possible. So you, you, your mind, not mindset, but your concept is maybe only one metal detector at the front door?
Were you thinking two?
I'm thinking two.
Well, that would also involve two officers, one on each door. I'm hoping that maybe we could reduce that with a camera instead, if that would, if, if, you know, everybody thinks that might suffice. It's just, you know, Major?
I was here last time.
Major Richardson.
Through all of this. I sat through it all. We, we drew up six or seven different designs and everything. That's how the glass got put in the vestibule, which restricts the, the back stairwell. Now, that's the one thing we came up with, and putting that personal, person central so that they could see that. That's all we came up with at the time. I believe that's all the money we had at the time to try to deal with making it a more, more secure building. That's when, it was several years later that the bulletproof glass went into finance. It was the same deal with that as well. But after going through all this for many months last time, the thing that killed it was the, the parking issue with, with the back door, and that being the, the handicap accessible entrance point.
So why couldn't we use a deputy at each door, instead of just trying to do the one?
Because you can't order. I think the courthouse staff, and Ms. Dyke's may know more about this, I think the courthouse staff is mainly comprised, their security staff is mainly comprised of retired correctional officers, working on a part-time basis. That may be an option we need to explore, because they have a certain amount of training in that area. But personally, I really don't see how we can do it with just one. There's just too much volume in and out of the building. Parking is the main issue, and if we're gonna do it, let's do it right the first time. Let's not look, look back six months after we have one, and we're having all these problems, and all of a sudden, it's like, wow, we should have really done two when we did this. So that, that's, that's my perspective on it. I agree, we need something.
I appreciate you all looking into this. I've had a few people reach out from an employee that works in this building. Anybody that's been working in a bank and had to go back to work after a robbery, that would be the thought process. We want to make sure the employees are safe, they're secure, their comfort level is where it needs to be. So I really appreciate you looking into this and seeing the best direction we can go. Madam State's Attorney can understand you're putting additional measures into your building. Can you?
Yes. No, there are, people are becoming more and more irrational, behaving more and more irrationally. We've seen it nationwide, certainly in this state. I won't recount the incredible tragedies we've had over the last 18 months. Nobody wants to be on the wrong side of this, essentially, as the President said. I agree that we, my office, are looking at efforts to make staff, staff more safe, right? We have a controlled access into our office. Of course, the courts building and the government office building aren't, you know, in a position to do that. The lower-cost option that Pete mentioned, the bailiffs, the white shirts, we call them, in the courthouse, they do have some training. I'm not sure all of their prior, what their prior experience, but most of them are retired. They have some level of training. I, I, that is likely a good option. But I, I agree, nobody wants to be on the, on the wrong side of this.
Split the cost with the city?
I have to, yeah.
The bunking would have to.
Yeah, yeah, it's a joint building. So I, I told the city administrator, Andy Kitser, we were having this discussion today and would follow up with him. But yet, I mean, they would have to, I would think they would have to agree with us, you know, since they own half the building, so.
At the courthouse, over here, you have, you know, you have to go through the metal detectors and whatever. And then when you get to the clerk of court's office, you have to talk through a little hole in the door. I don't know what that's all about. I mean, we had to deal with that a few months ago.
That came about during COVID.
COVID's over with, and they're still doing it. It's not your fault.
Just giving you the roof.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. We, we went through that here not long ago. So, anyway.
So my, my question, though, is, so if we got sort of bailiff-level folks, would you also want a commitment from the Sheriff's Office or the city police, since this is half-city, to be here on council meetings? Or, or the bailiff-level security folks would be enough? Or, you know, I, I, I need, you know, sort of direction? Or maybe you want me to, to talk to the city, talk to the Sheriff's Office, see if we can give you multiple proposals with different?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we're talking to the people here who know the best way to accomplish this, and I would leave it in your hands.
Okay.
Is that what you were talking about, bailiff level?
This has got to kind of be, this has kind of got to be seven-day-a-week, as long as the building's open, isn't it? Isn't that what you're looking for?
Open to the public.
I don't think we, just to be clear, I'm the one that brought this up. I brought this up for the past five years in a row, and most recently at our first budget council meeting, a couple, discussion a couple months ago. But I was specifically bringing up for the council meetings or for those other important meetings that we have, including, that, that could include the, the city or the, you know, for, if someone was upset about a, you know, a property appeal, a transaction, something like that that happened, you know, there could also be those kinds of moments. But I don't know about the day in, the day out, personally, from where I was coming from. But I certainly, I think we are definitely in a threat-level environment that we need to be active, certainly when there's the most folks in the, in the area. But I know, I don't, or I should say, is I, I've gone in enough other government buildings from the city councils or counties across the shore. And some of them are, of course, like Talbot, have their courthouse right there. Some of them are, you know, it's all a little different. But certainly for when we have the most amount of people coming through here, or when we have contentious issues, I think that would be important. I don't know about a seven-day-a-week kind of thing, or anytime it's open, but certainly the, the moments when we have the most folks are the most contentious things happening, I think is important.
I'm sorry. Could you also do something like the schools do with an SRO? Instead of having the metal detectors, just have one officer, a retired sworn officer in the building? I mean, instead of the metal detectors, just make sure they can be able to climb the stairs quickly if they need to, you know, because you don't want to wait for an elevator. That might be the, the least expensive thing to do.
Twice, there's been someone in this, in this space, one time I've heard it, one time I saw it, that someone is there with a, likely a firearm, which is not allowed, even if you are concealed carry, you're not allowed to be sitting there. One person went and told their, all their friends that they bragged that they brought a gun into the council chambers. That's where we're at.
So I was, it was more sort of a question for Major Richardson. In the courthouse, so their metal detectors are run by the white shirts.
But supervised with a deputy.
A sworn deputy.
So you have an armed deputy there?
Yes, always.
And, and I think that provides the maximum level of confidence and protection, would be a sworn deputy in, in proximity, whenever you have also a, a white shirt. Would be just my personal feeling, so.
Their problem compared to here is their volume is based at nine o'clock in the morning, when everything gets started, or one o'clock in the afternoon, when everything gets restarted. They have a rush, you know, during those hours. The G O B, it's, you know, it's, could be the same eight to five, as far as the amount of people walking in the, the door on a daily basis. It's not like you get a rush first thing in the morning, or a rush, you probably get a rush at lunchtime when everyone's trying- a rush at lunchtime when everyone's trying to get their work done on their lunch hour, but.
Did anybody explore or talk about maybe the SRO-type idea? And your, and your explanation, you know, and your.
Last time they were happy with the fact that we were getting at least eyes on a person when they walked into the building, to get a, a look at them, whether they looked like they might be off that day, whether they might be having a bad day. So that was the whole idea of being able for them to see them, sign them in. If they got a look and they got a bad feeling, they were supposed to be dialing a phone number, and that was mine. But that was what we were just trying to get to at that point, but that was also being driven by the fact that we didn't have any money to do it either. I, I'm not sure what it cost the stairwell to fix it, but it was not cheap to make that secure with the glass.
It wasn't, it was significant, but it's safety.
Yes.
And in that office, where you're handling money, it needs to be at that level. To address your SRO, that's one person, and they're already in the building. If, if somebody's coming in to do something with a gun or other type of weapon, if they don't go through a metal detector, or if they're not addressed at the point of entry, they're already in the building.
Same way it is with schools.
Yeah, understood, but there's a lot more limited access with pe, with grown adults. I wouldn't expect a teenager to come in here with a gun versus an adult. Comparatively to a school, comparing to a school.
I think the schools, you have to get buzzed in anyway, right? You can't get past.
I'm not sure.
I, I don't think you can get past the front door without being buzzed in. We appreciate you coming in and taking your time. Bunkie, we'll leave it in your hands, okay?
Okay.
Try to let us know when you want to get back together and, but we have a budget, we have a budget coming up, as you know. Maybe it's something we would implement this year, or may, maybe have to make amendments halfway through next year, if we want to do it right, but.
And also talk to Lori Carter on the off-chance that maybe there's some grant funding federally or state on, on stuff like this, so.
Okay.